Gentlemen, it is seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and call this evening's city council meeting to order. If you would please join us in a moment of silent reflection, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We have a few, we'll open up our recognized guest portion of the evening. We've got a few that wish to address council. First, we will read from our agenda. We had our Colonial Theater manager with us this evening, Anne Wilson. Anne, welcome. The floor is yours. If you would use the podium so that folks online can hear.
Sure. Hello. I haven't been here to present anything since my seating fundraiser. So I wanted to come back and give you a little bit of a snapshot of what investing in arts and culture in our community is contributing to. So there is a paper in your packet from the National Endowment for the Arts, and it's just a back and front, one page of snapshot facts that kind of go over both for-profit and nonprofit arts contributions through the state of West Virginia. And there's also some national facts on there. I am also, after I go through that really quickly, going to give you a brief update on the Colonial so that Ambie doesn't have to do that later since I am here. But I'm just going to give you a few facts. Obviously, I'm not going to go through this whole paper in detail. But just a few things. Eighty-one percent of the population says the arts are a positive experience in a troubled world. So that's something to really look at and think about as we continue to promote the arts programming in our community. The arts and culture sector of the nation is an $876.7 billion industry. It is a larger share of the GDP than agriculture, transportation, and utilities now. So it is a very rising industry. And tourism and revenue from both for-profit and nonprofit arts organizations support 4.6 million jobs and generate $27.5 billion in government revenue. It's an average estimate that arts attendees that go to an arts event spend an average of $31.47 a person. So this includes their ticket, a meal when they go out to eat somewhere in town, maybe lodging expenses, travel, things like that. So it really is a way to bring revenue into our community. And I think that it's been a driving force for tourism in our area, for sure. Students also, in the education aspect of it, students with arts engagement typically have higher GPAs, test scores, and college-going rates, lower dropout rates. And we are seeing the success of a lot of new arts programs in our communities. For example, we started a theater program at the middle school that's going to continue because it received a lot of positive feedback, and the kids are really loving that at the middle school. Ninety-one percent of Americans believe the arts are part of a well-rounded K-12 education. So something that we are looking into with our programming after our grand opening is programs with small fees to where we can take those fees and donate them to Upshur County school systems, to some of our elementary schools that don't have art spaces yet. Because there are some elementary schools that don't have specific arts classrooms or music rooms or anything like that. So that's sort of the idea behind some of our programming ideas that we have right now. And then, let me see what else I want to chat about. The social impact of what we're doing for our community. We have a higher civic engagement. I feel like more people want to get involved in our community, especially when we have a lot of arts events happening. It gets people excited about what we're up to around here. Because it also highlights a lot of our local culture and history. And I don't want to leave out what this can do for our veterans and military service. Creative arts therapies for veterans and military service members are ranked in the top forty out of forty, four out of forty intervention treatments. So the creative arts for healing are also something to really think about. It is a positive way to benefit the mental health of many of those people. Thirty minutes of active arts activities a day can combat the isolation and loneliness that a lot of us are struggling with post-pandemic. So again, I don't want to, you know, go through too much of that. But I just wanted to give you a snapshot of what this art center is contributing to on a larger scale. So thank you for letting me present that to you. For a brief update on the Colonial, we are very, very close to having all of the construction finished. Contractors are still in there today. Most recently, they were working on the roof, doing isolation work on that. They've been working on trim for baseboards and stairwells, things like that. We're just waiting on really some, a couple of larger pieces at this point. So I know the one big thing that's on everybody's mind is when are the telescopic seats coming? Those will be coming next month. Ambie and I are still waiting on like a final date of when we're getting those seats. And then, we're still waiting on St. Joseph's Hospital WVU Medicine Creative Suite artwork for downstairs for those studios and classrooms. Those are two of the largest parts that are missing, but they're on the way. So all of that will lead us up to our grand opening, which is still scheduled for October 1st. As far as other things I'm working on, I am working on some grant applications for the Colonial. Some of these I can apply as the city. Others, I am utilizing our 501(c)(3) partnership with Buchanan Community Theater. So I might be back soon after the October deadline to update you if I win any of those grants. As far as our fundraising efforts, the balcony theater seating fundraiser has been underway for a few weeks now. And out of eighty seats, we have sold thirteen plaques. So that's a good number to me because I don't, I think we launched it just less than a month ago. So I think that's a really good number to have, especially with the price point of the seat. It doesn't seem to be too deterring, so I really.
What's the price of?
So for one seat, it would be $2.50. But we are offering, if you buy more than four seats, they're $200. So one patron did buy five seats for $1,000. So it seems to be something that is tangible for most of our community, which makes me happy.
How many total, again?
Thirteen out of the eighty that are available up there. And then I'm sure, once we have these telescopic seats, we might reassess and make something some more for downstairs, so. Programming, I know I talked a little bit about that already. In the process of planning several different types of arts classes, including dance, visual arts, theater education programs, things with Buchanan Community Theater for children, to get children more involved aside from one production they typically do with children a year. So just more children's art education involvement. There's, we're also trying to put together a community band. After Wamsby, there's been so much vibrancy and positivity around this marching band. So why not have like a Buchanan Community Band? So that's sort of in the works right now, too. And I'm, of course, bringing back Boot Cannon because that was a big hit last year. So I'm just like planning some events to fundraise for the CAC to kind of lead up to our trick-or-treat, and trick-or-treat at the end of October. So that's all I have for you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
And of course, we've got the logo in the front, the marquee.
How could I forget? Thank you. The sign guy installed a logo for the Colonial on the front of the marquee in that blank area so I don't have to Photoshop it on anymore. It looks really great. So thank you for reminding me of that. But yeah, I can answer any questions.
Thanks. Thank you, Dan. All right. From our sign-in list, Tammy Rigger.
Yeah, I want to talk about F6. So do you want to wait until we get down there?
No, we can bring that to the table now.
Okay.
Just real quick, I know that you all are going to discuss the alcohol at the event center, at the Colonial Arts Center. The Chamber currently uses the event center for some fundraising events, including the annual dinner. That is why we moved the annual dinner to the event center, was because the alcohol was available there. We want to have an event in October with the Boot Cannon, a murder mystery dinner, where we would serve dinner and BCT would do a program. We need to be able to serve alcohol to get those ticket amounts to where we can make enough money for that fundraiser to even be possible. So with both, we would love to see the city consider putting, being able to serve alcohol in both of those buildings because without that, I mean, the Chamber's not funded, so we rely on fundraisers, and we do them throughout the year. This will be our third large fundraiser this year. Without alcohol in either one of those, it's really going to hurt us as far as ticket sales go. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Walz.
First of all, Mayor and Council, on behalf of the Colonial Arts Center Board, I want to say thank you, all of you. This has been, since the kernel of an idea a long time ago, people like Councilman McCauley, Bryson Van Nostre, and Erica Kalenich, who are mayor, I mean, people that have been involved in this step by step, and his council has joined in, Pam, others that have been really involved in this. Maybe for me, it was seeing that logo there, you know? It really felt like the thing's coming to fruition. So I'm speaking to you today only on behalf of the board. The other board members would have been here today to speak. They were willing to do so. We thought it was better. We just bring this request directly. I mean, we're just at a point now in our programming where we do believe we have a couple of events on the horizon that we would like to ask council to think a little bit about the ability for us to perhaps pilot a couple of events that might serve alcohol at the Colonial Arts Center. We believe after careful study, hands' work, and the way that events have been executed in the building, it's a good building for it. There's a clear entrance, there's a clear lobby door in and out, easy for us to control. The thought of the council, or I mean, of the board has generally been that a third party is what makes the most sense. I want to give a lot of credit to Keith Buchanan. At the very beginning of this work, started calling all kinds of other theaters and finding out what they were doing, how they were doing this. And, you know, there are ranges. You have places like Robinson Graham that have their own liquor license. We don't think that's for us. We don't believe that this would be a regular occurrence in the Colonial Arts Center. But if you take the event that Tammy's talking about, that we've been partnering on, the Buchanan Community Theater's partnering on, we believe with the ability to serve perhaps beer and wine, even in a very limited way, that that event has the chance to generate about $10,000 in fundraising revenue. That's pretty significant for us. So the two events we have that are coming are that event that we would like to host in October. Again, for the event to be successful, we do think to get to the price point we need, that we'd like to be able to serve beer and wine. Also, it's the thought of the board that I shared with you today, that beer and wine is really about the limit of what we think would be reasonable or expected in a space like that. When you're talking about theater or something, you know, you're really talking about before a show or intermission, you're talking about a pretty controlled time period. And we are interested, long-term, in that facility sustaining itself. That's not in the near future. The mayor's always pointed that out. Council's been supportive, and we're thankful of that. But the longer-term vision is that that does start to sustain itself. And we'd like to be able to charge ticket prices and bring the kind of acts into that space. And we do think that being able to serve beer and wine through a third party will make that possible. The other thing we think is, there's just so many spaces around it that are similar theater-type spaces that do, that we don't want to lose out on acts and opportunities, that we go to a different space to be able to do that if that's part of their interest. So any questions I can answer on behalf of the board?
John, it wouldn't just be for plays and gants or sandals and shows. I mean, wouldn't there be an opportunity if there was a big opening at the gallery, for example, and somebody wanted to have a glass of, you know, Chardonnay or champagne or whatever we serve?
Absolutely. And you're also talking about, you know, the opportunity for small-scale events and weddings, you know, things that could be held in the space. One of the great things about the telescopic seating is it gets out of the way to make a completely flat floor that allows you to have events like this. It was a wise decision, I think, that makes the best use of the space and gives us an opportunity to do those kind of things. So yes, I think, you know, and again, our thought would be if there's a lack of certainty about it, think of piloting a couple of things, think of seeing how one or two goes. You know, if there's questions about how that's executed, we think that could be a sensible way to begin, you know, because these things would sort of come over time. And the board's role's about to change. The board will become more programming role and a fundraising role, and that's what you're starting to see. So people are kind of split up into working on programming with Ann, working on fundraising with Ann and Keith, and a lot of other people that are working on it. And you're starting to see, even after the facility will open, there's going to be a lot of fundraising that's going to keep occurring. And I think everyone's really interested and invested in that, so that's what's to come. Any questions?
Council, while Mr. Walz and Mrs. Rigger are here, we do have a line item on the agenda which would be F6, which is a discussion of sale of alcohol for special events at the Brushy Fork Event Center as well as the Colonial Arts Center. I would ask that we bring that to the table now for discussion.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. McCauley, a second by Mr. Rylands. All those in favor of bringing F6 to the table, please signify by saying, excuse me, aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carried. Contagious, I'm just moving down the road. Contagious, I'm just moving down the road. Okay, F6 is on the table for discussion. Counsel?
I would like to separate, if we can, or at least for purposes of discussion, if we're talking from the Arts Center about pilot program, possibly a pilot program with beer and wine, I don't want that to, to bleed over into the event center. The event center, we will be requesting to have a full bar, seek an alcohol beverage license, is my recommendation, and not everybody agrees with it, but that's where the profitability factor will come in with, if the city continues running the event center. We cannot allow a third party to just come in and benefit from all of the profits from those sales while we're just working on a very small rental fee. It just doesn't make sense for that, that particular venue.
So are you asking that we take these up individually, even though they're within the same? We can do that.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense. If we want to vote on.
Each of them, okay.
So do you want another motion, that we take up the Colonial first? Would that, does that make it simpler?
Since they're here, we'll do that.
Sure.
Okay, let's take up the Colonial first, that's my motion.
Second. Motion by McCauley, a second by Rigger, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And sign on those motion carries. Okay, we are specifically talking about the Colonial Arts Center at this time.
And this is beer and wine only?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think there's any need for hard alcohol at a reception or a show, I mean.
Most do not include that, that's correct.
You'd have, you'd have an investment in having to keep the stuff locked up, and glasses, or glassware, or that's temporary. I think it has to be temporary, because you don't have three-bull sinks and other stuff to clean everything, so.
Well, I think what Mr. Walz was talking about, and the board was talking about a third-party vendor who would just bring it in and take it back out. Now, that does.
Using our license?
No, no, they would be, would be using the third-party vendor's license.
We wouldn't be seeking a license for this particular location.
Yes, but then we have to be the licensed party. No.
No.
No?
No.
So we can have a license, and anyone can use?
What we're, what, what, what we're, what we're asking, what, what, what is under consideration, what the, what the Colonial Arts Center Board is bringing to us, is the permission to allow the sale of beer and wine in the facility, not for the city of Buchanan.
Right, at least, at least as we got our fee went with it, and we thought that was the right way to attempt to proceed, is to allow a third party to handle all of that and to bring it in. Try it out and see how it works.
Ambie knows this.
A third party would, would, would list the city as an additional insured on their insurance. We would not have that insurance for that particular facility.
So these entities, whoever they might be, would have a one-time use license?
Yes, that's how.
Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah.
Ambie, with the insurance, wouldn't we want a liability for that, since we're allowing alcohol to be served on that premise?
With liability.
So when they share their certificate of insurance, they would list the city of Buchanan as an additional insured, they, they would be the insurance, the insurance carrier. We would have to verify that they have not only liability insurance, but liquor liability insurance. And just. And just for, just for clarification, sorry, Mr. Sanders, liquor for, insurance hat for a second, liquor liability is alcohol, okay? That's just what it's called. I, I, even though it's just beer and wine, it's liquor liability is the alcohol coverage, so.
And with the third party, again, with the CAC, we're giving up the profitability of actually selling the product, but we're able to then price our tickets at a much more attractive level.
Correct. Yeah, we, we believe, for example, the type of event we're talking about having has the potential to have a, almost a double price point, based on just the ability to have it available to the people that are buying the ticket.
So, John, how many events are you thinking about a year?
I would be, I, I, I don't know, but I'm probably ballparking, this would probably be two for the fall. I mean, that's.
So maybe eight for the year?
Yeah, it could be eight a year, or six, eight a year.
Do you know what the cost associated with getting this, eight different licenses and eight different liability policies, or?
We, 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 okay, we, all we're doing is offering the, all we would be asking, the person, the third party, so let's just, let's just say, for example, that the new Jimbo's place up here would, would want to, would want to be the, the provider of the alcohol. It would be their responsibility to, to, to get the license, provide the insurance, provide the liquor liability. They would bring it in, they would take it out, they would not be storing anything in the theater. And we, all we're doing is creating the environment.
Is what the cost for that vendor is going to be, and if it's too prohibitive, they're not going to do it. So even though you got permission, if the cost is too much.
Well, that's had the permission before we can go direct.
Yeah, we, we recognize that there's going to be a process of pursuing and speaking to vendors, we also think there'll be a vetting process that has to happen, to speak to people we think are reliable and have executed a similar type of event before, that we felt was done in a, in a correct and safe way. I, again, I think it would probably be, I would imagine there'd be a process of us or someone coming back to report to you after the event or two, to say, here's how we think this went, here's the problems we ran into, and maybe we take a different approach, but I think that's what we would be asking, is the, is the chance to try it this way.
And that'll have to be laid out in some kind of contractual written agreement that they sign up, right? You're not going to just.
Correct, correct, correct. Yeah, just, just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. For, for the particular piece, the Colonial Arts Center piece that we are discussing right now, we, we, the action to take, yes or no, would be to allow, to allow the practice to take place, to allow the sale of alcohol and consumption of alcohol, beer and wine only, to take place. We are not signing up for a liquor license, we are not signing up for liquor liability, we're not signing up to, to, to carry the alcohol and store it in the facility. This is just to allow the, the, create the environment conducive to, to allow it to happen.
I thought that Mr. Walz mentioned we'll do a trial.
Correct.
Trial basis, so should the motion read two events, four events?
I think that'd be reasonable. I think we have two events in mind for fall, the opening of the, of the facility and the fundraiser event. I think those would be two easy events for us to.
Which are pretty, well, they're pretty close back-to-back.
Yeah.
And then we come, you know, and then, and then bring it back.
Right.
For us to make a final decision.
So at the Colonial Arts, the Colonial Arts Board, the advisory board meets once a month, they meet on the first Tuesday of every month here at five o'clock. So what we could do is, in the November meeting, we could, we could have a, a part of the agenda to reach, to just review how October went. And then if there's a recommendation that would need to be made for starting 1-1, if any changes need to be made, or it could have gone very well, and, and there doesn't need to be any changes made, but I think that would be the appropriate time, perhaps, to just review. We, we would know by that time how the sales went, if there were any problems, if the vendors had any issues with the logistics, so. And then there would also be a meeting, perhaps, in December, sometimes we cancel December meetings as we're getting closer to Christmas, but we, we would want to just reevaluate for November and December, and if there would need to be a recommendation, that would be the appropriate time for it. So yes, if the motion, I, I agree with you, I think the motion should be to allow, the wording should be conditional, or a pilot for the, the fall events that are scheduled, and then a reevaluation to take place, just to look at it at the end of that, of those two.
How a motion to approve wine and beer sales at the CAC as a pilot program to accommodate the two fall events.
Second.
Okay.
I mean, is that wording?
Oh, I thought.
I think, so, it sounds to me like that you're, you're agreeable to that wording, is that, is that, is that correct? Okay. Is that your motion?
Yeah, that's my motion. I thought it was Randy's.
Do you want, are you, are you making the motion?
I'll second it.
Somebody just tell me.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Motion Pam can second it.
Okay, all right, all right. We have a, we have a motion by Mr. Rigger, a second by Mrs. Buckle. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Couple, couple of points, then I'll shut up. First, I think, going back to late 2016, early 2017, when we kicked this off, Robinson Grand had already opened in Clugsburg, and several of us had been to an event or two there, and had a beer, or a glass of wine, or whatever. I think, I think we thought this would be coming down the pike at some point. That's observation number one, is an historical one. Number two, I, I said to Ann and Ambie, a thing from the Palace Theater up in Greensburg, Pennsylvania, that I'm a member of, I go up there two or three times a year for concerts, the last one I saw was in May, America, the band, I know, it's an oldies band. There's a code of conduct that has about eight or ten bullet points, that people who get a bottle of beer, or a glass of champagne, or whatever the show is, they agree to abide by certain things. They're not going to overindulge, and I think there would also need to be some exercise of discretion by the board and our theater manager. If, if we're doing a thing, for example, the, the annual spring showing of art generated by Buchanan Upsher students, I don't think that's an event that we ought, if you want to have a Sprite, that's one thing, but I don't think we should be looking at Coltrill Hills at, at an event that's kid-oriented. But that, that's, that's just some of my thoughts. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to navigate that.
I like the idea of charging the board to work with Ann and others to come up with that code of conduct, really publicly positioned.
Sure, some things to think about, yeah. That's all I got, Rodney.
Thank you.
I have a silly question. Does champagne come under wine and beer, or liquor?
Wine and beer.
Okay.
Yeah. Jerry?
I have just a couple of questions.
Could you, could you come to the microphone, please?
Hi, I just have a couple of questions, I'm not familiar with the issue too much, but would the third part of, third person be somebody local, so that that money stays in our vicinity?
Preferred, that would be the, that would be the.
Preferred, yeah, if we find somebody.
Okay. And will they follow the same rules with carding every individual and being responsible for the amount of consumption?
That's required, that's, it's state law, and in order, and in order to obtain a license to sell, you have, you have to do that.
Okay. And the cleanup, because there's a little bit more cleanup when you're going into the alcohol, will that be taken care of by the third person, rather than coming back on the city?
Yes.
And the final question is, will this be just for events that are sponsored by the board, or will it be open to other people who are scheduling an event there, that they can also bring in their third person?
Well, I think that would be, the board would need to determine, you know, that, and bring a recommendation back to council as to how they want to handle an event not sponsored by the board.
I would think that's probably viable, but again, we've got, this motion will cover two events coming up that's managed by the board.
Right. I just think that'll be asked by people who are planning weddings or something else.
Yes.
And I think the other questions would be asked by other venues in town, who are now going to be competing for the same events, because we're now offering the alcohol and, and the other things. So I think that kind of information is what.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, we have a motion and a second on the table. Would you please read the motion again, just so we're clear?
Motion to approve wine and beer sales at the Colonial Arts Center as a pilot program to accommodate two, the two fall events.
And that motion was made by Rigger and Buckle. All right, I will call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. For the other half of F6, I, I would, it is not on the agenda for this particular thing, but I would like to ask that we perhaps go into, enter a very brief executive session following the council meeting this evening regarding the other half of F6. I have some information I want to share with you today from a conversation I had with the mayor of Somersville. Would that be okay?
Sure.
So that would be relative to property matters.
Okay, that's, you have to cite, you have to cite the reason.
Yes, it, it would be relative to property matters.
So we're on cable.
Yes, it, it, we might, well.
Can we do that again session now?
Right now, yes.
Sure, we can.
Then we have to have people leave.
We can, we can, we can go.
Yeah, because, because we've got, we're getting requests, these are the recent requests for the event.
Yeah, that's why I wanted you to be able to share, that's why. So, okay, it is, it is 7:31, I would entertain a motion that the council enter into a brief executive session relative to property matters to discuss the other half of F6. Is there a motion?
She'll move.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by McCauley, a second by Buckle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. We'll be right back after these brief messages. Stay tuned.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, at 7:54, I entertain a motion that we re-enter open session from executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Rigger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Lights on opposed, motion carries. That, we are, let the minutes reflect that we have returned from an executive session relative to property matters. Let, just for our understanding, the council is permitted to go into executive session to discuss two different matters per state code. One is personnel matters and one is property matters. We discussed the latter. Uh, we are still on F6. We, we have discussion relative to that line item. Uh, and I believe, Mr. Sanders, you had some thoughts to share with the council as we enter back into, uh, regular session.
So as most everyone knows, thank you, Mr. Mayor, most everyone knows, we have been working with the management of the event center under the umbrella of the city. Since the CBB elected to turn the operations over to the city, and they really had to because the state code requires that all of their income is in this particular way, forty percent for payroll, forty percent for marketing, twenty percent for operations. Because of the cost of operating the event center, that percentage was way skewed. So they were at a, a point of risking losing their accreditation as a CBB. So, we have been operating it, um, since that time, and, and in order for us to move forward and explore the possibility of hiring a full-time event center manager and to market it appropriately, I would like to recommend to council that it approve the city exploring the, uh, obtaining a liquor license under the name of the city, so that, uh, as we operate that, we'll be able to offer that services and retain all profits, uh, from those proceeds to help with the management costs of the facility. So that's my recommendation. All right.
Is that your motion?
Also.
I'm recommending it, so somebody wants to make a motion. Is there any discussion on Mr. Sanders's, uh, recommendation? All right, uh, is there a motion to, uh, explore, uh, obtaining a, uh, for special events, uh, a liquor license, uh, for the sale of alcohol at the, uh, Brushy Fork Event Center?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. But Mr. Thomas, is there a second? This will be in the name of the city of Buckingham.
I'll second it.
Second by Mrs. Buckle. Okay. If there is no further discussion, I will call for that question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstains.
Lights on opposed, motion carries with, let the minutes reflect, the council, uh, is unanimously supportive with the exception of Mr. Rylands, uh, due to his ownership of a establishment that, uh, can compete with the, uh, event center. Okay. Um, all right, that takes care of F6. All right, um.
Yeah, the rest of the meeting can do.
I know. I, I know, I was about ready to say council comments and announcements.
Yeah.
Okay, um, does anybody else wish to address the council this evening? Okay, I would declare, uh, the time for public comment with recognized guests to be closed. Let's go to the remainder of our meeting. We will go to the department report. I have Jerry's report. Uh, I will, it's in your packet, but I'll go through it very quickly. Um, the, uh, this is, this is from, this is received today. Street Department, uh, Street Crews completed the paving and reopened Scott Street. Um, that's been a long-awaited, uh, completion. That neighborhood continues to get a facelift. Uh, and that's, that's basically phase one. As you know, we do have a plan, uh, for, uh, down the road for additional street lighting as well as sidewalks on one side of Shawnee Drive in the city limit portion between Cardinal Street and the city limit ending, uh, just before Hillcrest Drive. Uh, finishing up curbs on Madison Street Lot, uh, that's, that's going well. Uh, Sewer Department, uh, we have the plant had a combine, a combined sewer outflow, uh, compliance inspection, uh, compliance evaluation inspection, uh, biosolids inspection. We passed all of those. Uh, the WBDEP inspector was very complimentary of our operations. Uh, if you have not been to the sewer plant, it is, I, I get some laughs every time I say this out in the community. It is the neatest operation that we have, to see it from start to finish. So I would highly recommend taking a tour of that facility if you have some time. Also, crews are still working on both Shawnee Drive and Marner Street projects. Uh, Waste Department, uh, we did have an accident, um, with our tractor trailer uh, on August 8th at the, um, I-79 northbound on-ramp, uh, going to the landfill in Harrison County. Uh, the insurance adjuster has inspected the damage and is preparing an estimate. Uh, no one was hurt, that is the most important thing, and it was a single vehicle crash, uh, just, just with our vehicle. Uh, reminder that we will be sponsoring a Make It Shine Day, uh, Days, I should say, at the transfer station again this September 9th and September 23rd. Uh, please contact, uh, City Hall or the transfer station for more information, and we'll be getting out some, uh, some, some information on our website and social media regarding those two days. Uh, we've been, we've seen success in having those more toward the fall versus the spring. So, uh, mark your calendars for September 9th and 23rd, those are Saturdays. Wait, uh, Water Department removed the wa, the raw water intake pump yesterday, and it is, uh, to be repaired. Under engineering, Jay has a few things for us. First, the Tenerton Booster Station, construction activities are being expected, uh, to begin in the next two to three weeks as the, all the right-of-way agreements have been obtained. Contract A will be completed prior to Contract B. Makes sense, doesn't it? Uh, not, not always with, with, with engineers, sometimes they go backwards. Uh, FEMA Generator, uh, Hazard Mitigation Grant Number Two, super going number two before number one this time. Closeout documentation and procedures will continue. Uh, he will be submitting, uh, all of the necessary documentation before the end of September. Then down to Grant Number One, contract, uh, for, or contractor for Contract Three will begin additional excavation activities and the construction of the steel platform at the PSC, uh, next week. Uh, the punch list of items for Contract One and Contract Two are nearly complete. This grant is expected to be completed and closed out prior to the, uh, end of November of this year. The Gateway West Phase Two construction, uh, construction activities and the installation of all the light poles have been completed. So when you get off the Main Street exit and you cut, and you get to the point where, uh, about where Patsy Linger used to live, you will start to see lights on both sides of the street. They look very nice when you come into town at night. Uh, construction of the pedestrian, uh, Refuge Island at the bottom of Amelia Drive. If you recall, what we are going to redesign, with the state of West Virginia, because that's a state route right through there, to redesign the entrance and exit into St. Joseph's Hospital, to make, making it a bit safer. Uh, so that will begin after September 1st and should take four weeks to complete. So if you are traveling through there, please expect some travel, uh, detours or delays uh, and possible flagging as you, uh, come off the Main Street exit or if you're leaving town, uh, out West Main Street toward the Weston Road after September 1st. But, uh, hospital traffic will not be impeded. You will still be able to reach St. Joseph's Hospital. Uh, the Elizabeth J. Benkee Poundstone River Walk Trail Extension Number Four. Jay is continuing to work, uh, on the design of, uh, the three 200-foot extensions of the, uh, walking trail from Madison, from, I'm sorry, from Marion Street to Randolph Street and to the Moore Avenue intersection. That will take it to the end of city limits all the way from the college. Per the direction of the West Virginia Department of Highways in Charleston, uh, the design phase of the project must be completed by August 31st of 2023. Uh, and finally, under Jay's report, uh, we had a CRS community visit. That's our, that's relative to the flood, uh, program that we are in. We are a CRS community. Um, the review of the documentation and subsequent CRS ranking will be completed in the mid to late August of 2023. The city is currently a Class Eight community, which entitles all flood insurance policyholders to receive a 10% discount on their flood insurance policies. Uh, that is a program that we have entered, really, for the benefit of, uh, flood, uh, policy carriers because one-third of our city corporate limits area, uh, is, sits within a flood zone, so. Uh, but that, that reevaluation could take a few areas out of flood zone, but it also could put a few areas in flood zone. Much of this has not been evaluated since a lot of the development around, uh, North Locust Street has taken place as well as some in the downtown area. So we'll be interested to see that report. Um, if you have questions for Jerry, please contact him, uh, next week, uh, and he can, uh, help you with anything from his report. Uh, next up, we have the Finance Director. Yes, I had to wake everybody up there. Um, Amy, it is your turn.
My financial report is pretty short, and then I have about three other items on the agenda that I'll be up and down about. Uh, balances for your enterprise funds, July 31st, 2023, waste collection board, 1,324,000. And then we have, uh, CD and savings accounts that total 258,000 plus a letter of credit. That's for the landfill at 64,000. Water board money market in checking, 900,000. And then working capital and savings accounts, uh, compiled, uh, total 874,000. Sanitary board money market in checking, 960,000 with their working capitals in depreciation accounts totaling 459,000, and then the stormwater funds at 244,000. Um, we do have a, uh, public meeting scheduled, uh, for the Stalker Youth Center, um, potential project of building a building to expand the Stalker programming, um, that is currently in, uh, the, um, East Main Street School. Um, this is, we would keep the East Main Street School and build an additional building for these additional, like, expansion of their programs. That's going to be on September the 13th at 6:00 PM at the Stalker Youth Center. And then the only other things I've got, uh, you want me to update you real quick on the, uh, items on the agenda?
Yes, let's, while, while you're up, let's, let's go ahead and take care of, uh, what we need to take care of. You want to start with the budget revision?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, Budget Revision 2023, uh, Resolution Number 10, uh, General Fund Budget Revision. Um, a few things needed to be addressed. We, uh, when we came into the new year, there were some generator funds that had, we'd requested a drawdown for, and we had not received those. Um, we do still anticipate them, them coming in, and actually, it totaled about 4, $320,000. So, in your budget revision, I'll go through the things that changed in revenues, uh, BNO contractors. We budgeted 90,000, and we've already went over with, uh, revenues of that, so I'm adding an additional 30,000 into that to make BNO contractors, BNO, 120,000. The event center, we had a, uh, payment of $1,015 for an event. We had nothing budgeted in there, so we put it in. Okay, so now we get to the FEMA generator grants. Um, Generator Number Two, a draw that didn't come in last year is coming in this year, 30,823, adding that to revenues. And then FEMA Generator Grant Number One, that project isn't finished. However, we do have a draw of 289,000, 705, that didn't come in in the last fiscal year, it's coming in this fiscal year. And then the completion of that generator project, an additional draw of 253,000, uh, will be brought in throughout the year. So a total for that generator project is 543,553. So total revenues coming in, 605,361. In your expenses, uh, we, uh, mentioned that we have a cat control person that was hired. Uh, council approved that, and, uh, he's been busy. So we're going to up that, uh, from $500, uh, and adding 1,500 to, to make 2,000, and this is for the entire year. Uh, Engineering Services, uh, council had approved, uh, Potesta for the Stalker Youth Center, um, project. We did not, we paid them in the last fiscal year 167,000. Um, we still owe them about 207,000, so that's being brought over to this year because we know at some point, once they start the project, they'll be, uh, engineering, uh, on the actual building and, uh, permitting and various things during the project that'll be done. Um, in council contingency, I can put 22,043 dollars. Council had also asked for contribution for playground, uh, upgrades of 100,000, so that's in there. Uh, the CAC Capital, there's, like Ann mentioned, there's some finish-up work being done in the theater, and there's a, the outside wall on the west side is, uh, having some, uh, they call it drive-it. It's a film that goes over the wall so it won't absorb any moisture. And then finishing up some of the things on the inside, $20,000. Uh, Event Center Retirement, and the reason I put that in there is, uh, if we use city employees, city employees, if we have any full-time employees in there, will have retirement in that. So I'm adding $1,000 into that in case we have city employees up there doing work and we can identify that they've worked at the CAC and that CAC budget will, will take on that, um.
Event Center, you mean? Well, CAC, Event Center.
Oh, I just said, I had CAC right about, you said Event Center, sorry, Event Center.
Sure.
Um, then, um, FEMA Generator Grant, uh, like I mentioned up there before, to finish up, that project is the cost of 253,818, so your total budget revision, 605,361 dollars.
Andy, when you said the 100,000 for playgrounds, I, I think there should be, uh, parks, including playgrounds.
Park improvements?
It was, uh, particular, it was a park street.
Yeah, it was just about playgrounds, it was a whole recreational park concept, right?
Okay, well.
And, and that is, that is to be allocated to Consolidated Public Works?
Right.
Yes.
Right, it just says park upgrades, yeah, in the, in the actual attachments that they provided as contribution to Consolidated Public Works Board, contribution towards park upgrades.
Okay.
Under engineering, you had indicated the 207,000 was going to Potesta? Isn't that the Mills Group?
No.
It is going to Potesta?
Potesta is our, our engineer of record.
Okay.
They outsource some of the work to the Mills Group.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Mills is paid by Potesta?
Yes.
Correct, yeah.
Gotcha.
That's the relationship.
We don't pay, we do not pay the Mills Group.
Yeah, Potesta retains the Mills Group as their architect.
Yep, gotcha.
All right, any other questions relative to the budget revision, uh, recommendations? Is there a motion to approve the budget revision as presented?
Show, second.
The motion by Mr. McCauley, uh, Mr. Rigger seconds, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Lights on opposed, motion carries unanimously. It is a resolution, so we will need a roll call, and I will defer to Mr. Sanders.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Rylands?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckle?
Yes.
Ms. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Rigger?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders votes yes, so it is unanimous.
Yep, so we'll sign the appropriate documentation. Okay, Amy, up next.
Okay, F4 is approval of the renewal loan for the Fiore, I don't know if I'm saying that right. Concrete mixer first community bank, we already have the concrete mixer, but as a city, we have to renew our lease purchase every year. And this particular bank wants us to do it formally, so that they can have a copy of the minutes, so.
Hey, we've done it, we've done it every year, right?
Shut up, right?
Okay. Mr. Thomas is motioning for Amy to stop talking, and if this would be, uh, I think that would work, thank you. All right, um, so, Mr. Thomas, so, so, just to be clarified, Dave, you are seriously motioning, right?
I just thought we helped out and get things done.
Okay, all right, so there, is there a second? Second by the other David. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
I didn't mean to shut up, Amy, though.
That's okay, they tell me that in this next one, too.
Go ahead, Mary, finish the motion.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Lights on opposed, motion carries, okay.
We're hurrying up, uh, copier lease. We already have the copiers, um, we actually are getting upgrades to the copiers. We have to renew the lease, um, it's going to be, I've negotiated with them, I'm getting better copiers for the same price we're paying, so. Uh, two copiers in City Hall, 622 dollars a month.
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me, I mean, you already bit on me.
All right, we have a motion to accept the, uh, renewal lease agreement, uh, for two Toshiba copiers, uh, by Mr. Sanders, and second by Mr. Thomas. To clarify, you are authorizing me to sign that lease agreement?
Yes.
Um, that, that is, that is part of the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Lights on opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy, great job.
All right, uh, Police Chief Matt Gregory, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Hi, Matt.
Hi.
I'm back there taking notes, uh, regarding the length of my report. As it's received.
You asked for an executive session note, as it's received.
Did you take notes about 20 years ago, 15 years?
No, no, I've ordered along, along the way, so, so.
The improvements are amazing.
And, and it's thus been reinforced.
Went in, out, Kalia.
Yeah, that's right, that's what I said.
How about your Farber hat, that's your Porsche?
That's right. So a few things to report, obviously, the, uh, uh, the greatest concentration of our resources was for Walmspie. I know that, uh, there's already been a lot said regarding that with the last meeting. Uh, I just wanted to add a few key takeaways from the Police Department perspective regarding, uh, the security response. Uh, overall, it was a tremendous success, uh, security-wise. Uh, very pleased with just the way that, um, all of our public safety resources banded together, uh, from throughout the region, uh, to assist with this event, and I owe, uh, a, a large, uh, debt of gratitude uh, to those agencies that did assist with this, and I believe made it the success that it was. Uh, so a few key takeaways, uh, from this, uh, that, that we've gleaned moving forward, uh, from the success of this event, uh, was first and foremost, our all-hazard plan, uh, that we followed stringently, uh, throughout the planning process. And we really began, uh, the planning process, uh, a good year, year and a half in earnest on this, and, uh, followed the, uh, principles set forth through our all-hazard plan, all, a lot of our Kalia principles, uh, that were established through accreditation, and, um...
and really saw that it was tested in a number of different aspects, and really, probably more so than we've ever seen it tested, through not only pre-planned events that we've seen over the years, but even spontaneous events. And because of that, we saw definitively that it worked as designed. And it just so happened that, just on the tail end of Wamsby, as we entered into August, one of our time sensitive things that we have to do for Kalia every August is to conduct, one, training on our all-hazard policy to make sure that everybody in our agencies on the same page, and that includes not only our, our paid staff, but our VIPs volunteers as well. But also to conduct a, a review of the plan and the policy itself, and report to Kalia the, any recommended changes or, or the efficiency, the overall efficiency of the plan itself. So, I had a lot to say about it this time to Kalia, just simply because it was literally on the tail end of, of testing it to, to limits that we have never taken it to with, that we did with Wamsby. So, again, it was, it worked as designed. A lot of that, I mentioned, the tremendous help that we got from a variety of public safety resources, but I think just as much so, if not even more than that, was the assistance that we got from the city personnel. They absolutely made this the success that it was, and that covered everything from operations, a lot of our utility guys, the street guys, helping us shut down streets, from, everything from the events themselves around the college, very much including the Parade of Nations and the lineup area. I thought, when we had the hot wash there a couple of weeks ago, I thought one of the key statements made by Sandra Bennett, who was in charge of the parade, was that was the most efficient she's ever seen the lineup. And that's what we've been striving to, for all of our parades, to get to that level. And I, I really believe that through the testing of this all-hazard plan and, and the, the intricate planning, and the execution of the plan, that we got to that level. And, and again, I really believe that a lot of that is because of the city personnel. They stepped up big time and helped us. At one point, we had as many as 100 people working under the security plan, of which about 60 of those were police officers, and the other 40 were city personnel, helping us right on the front lines with everything. That also includes Ambie and her City Hall staff, who, who served in a logistics function. They absolutely kept, someone made the comment that they were amazed at how few medical issues that we had, especially the day of the parade, and when we've seen, especially as you get into the hard months, you see a lot of heat-related emergencies toward the end of the parade. We had very, very, very few of those types of incidents all through the week, the parade included, and it was directly attributed to, and I heard this made, this statement made from state representatives who were present at the emergency operations center, that they believe it's directly because of the water that was distributed by the logistics throughout the event. So, they kept everybody healthy, they kept everybody knowing what they needed to do out there. And we, and it was more than just the water, that was, that was the, obviously, the, the largest piece of the puzzle, but they helped with all of our supply needs, from the command center all the way down to each individual post. So, kudos to Ambie and her staff, Jerry and his staff. The city personnel really stepped up big time. I mentioned mutual aid. Our mutual aid not only assisted, but confirmed that we have a lot of really strong partnerships in our surrounding area, and a lot of the surrounding agencies, they also stepped up big. Obviously, the level of security response to this event was way greater than anything we were remotely capable of. And the idea throughout the planning process, coming into this, obviously, and we knew that, we, we knew we were going to have to reach beyond our resources to achieve the level of response that we knew that Wamsby needed and deserved to make this the safest event that we could possibly make it. It was, McKenna was on the world stage. We appreciated that, we recognized that, and with that mindset, we designed the security plan accordingly. I'd stated on many of the presentations throughout the planning process that the security plan seems just grandiose, and it was certainly designed to be that way for a reason. And again, the mindset was to keep it as safe as we possibly could. We leaned on municipal, county, and state agencies for everything from manpower assistance to give us those extra officers that were foot patrolling and helping with traffic control throughout the event. We also relied on special resources such as explosives, canines, that helped to sweep the event area as well as the parade areas, to make sure that our participants and spectators alike were safe. We relied on overwatch assistance. We relied on what's known as CST teams through the National Guard to help with suspicious package response. The state police stepped up big time in allowing us to utilize not only the Batmobile for command post, but also a man lift. That worked out tremendous on the other side of the field. It helped us to have a better overwatch of the bands lining up on Camden Avenue and keeping them safe as they entered the field. And so, the list just goes on and on and on about how much mutual aid we got from these agencies and how big they stepped up to really help with this. They really bought into, we had an initial meeting with our public safety partners, as I've reported in the past, moving into the summer months, and for those that attended from our area, they really bought into the concept of partnering with us and making Wamsby a safe and, and a successful This also includes not only manpower assistance, but another key takeaway was the resources that we got from not only police agencies, but emergency agencies from not only the county government. Steve Wykoff was a major player in planning this process, but also the state's emergency management that helped us obtain, obtain resources that we use across the board with the security plan. I know that some of the other department heads talked about this. We can certainly echo the, another key takeaway for us was the absolute tremendous opportunity for community policing that we had that week. And that is with just everybody involved. It was truly, from my perspective, it was truly a community atmosphere, whether it was bands from halfway across the world or folks here in town that are taking part in the event. Our officers were out foot patrolling many of the events at the college as well as downtown, and we had ample, ample opportunity to engage with participants and spectators alike. We hosted a, a number of tours, a number of impromptu, just meet and greets, if you will. Took a lot of pictures. I'm sure our image is all over the world right now because there was a lot of picture taking, and we were happy to do it. It was, it was a thrill, and I heard this repeatedly from our officers, just how thrilling it was to get to engage with folks and get to know folks from all around the world, and we really bought into that. And the final takeaway was the very detailed planning process, of course, and I think one of the, and this was also brought up at the hot wash. One of the key successes of the planning process was communication. Everybody involved from across the board, whether it be city representatives, law enforcement representatives, or Wamsby representatives, we were all at the table throughout the entire process, and we had each other's numbers. We stayed in regular contact and communication with each other, and that was critical and key to the success of the event, because when, when it came time to execute the plan, there wasn't a question about what's to be done. We were all on the same page. We were all working in tandem together, and that's really what I think through this all is the greatest takeaway for all events moving forward, is to use this infrastructure that we have in place with our policies, our procedures, through our all-hazard plan, our Kalia accreditation, and to operate in a capacity to where we communicate to the level of whoever it may be, meaningful, whether it be Strawberry Festival, Barbecue Bash, any other event moving forward, that we have that type of operation. And, and again, with the goal of being, making it the safest and most efficient and successful event that we can. And we've, we've proved that we can do it, and I think that we have established that precedent moving Moving beyond Wamsby, and really running in tandem with this was our other acronym that we, that we managed. I've mentioned Kalia many times throughout the Wamsby process, but Kalia was still going on in the midst of Wamsby. And in fact, our annual web assessment occurred right on the tail end of Wamsby. In fact, I thought it was, it was originally scheduled to occur on August 4th, and because Kalia has introduced new aspects to the process to include not only a review of the files, which occurs every year, but now they also conduct what's known as areas of focus interviews, where they pick certain large topic areas such as user force, training, evidence control, those types of things, and they will interview members of your staff to discuss the application of the policy and the effectiveness of the accreditation principles. So, all that had to be set up in addition to the review of the files, and I was notified of that on July 27th. So, I was actually on the road at the time at a Kalia conference, and literally had to code the assessor in on the phone to get him started with that. So, that occurred over the course of, of, of two weeks, beginning in late July, just wrapped up last Friday, where I received a final report. The assessor was actually a retired captain from Charlotte Mecklenburg, who, coincidentally, his, his area of expertise was event management, and so we had a lot to talk about when, when I spoke to him on the phone, and we were in the midst of Wamsby. And so, we had a lot to talk about with that. But he did report at the conclusion of the interviews and the file review, that once again, he's able to sign off on our assessment, report back to Kalia that no issues were found. And so, that marks year two for our four-year accreditation that, as we move toward that reaccreditation status in 2025. Just a couple of other things to wrap up. Police Department hosted another successful national night out event on August 1st. This year, we saw 317 individuals attend. Tomorrow, August 18th, the police and fire departments will host West Main RAs at the Public Safety Building. This is an annual meet and greet that we have with the RAs, a trainer that we have to hold a Q and A, answer any questions regarding emergency response and public safety operations. So, we look forward to doing that tomorrow. And then on September 21st, oh, backing up, of course, that's in advance of Move-In Weekend, which occurs, I think there's some correspondence that talks about the one-way traffic on Mead Street. We do work in tandem with security to, to assist with that event as well. So, really, that kicks off with our meeting of the RAs, and we assist with the welcome weekend, all throughout the weekend, to include Move-In as well as the Bobcat Fair. And then moving forward into September 21st, we'll continue to work with Westman College at a career fair. We'll have representatives at that location. Mayor, that's all I have.
Great report.
Thank you, Matt.
Any questions or comments for Chief Gregory?
I noted on here, night out, you had a successful national night out. I might have missed you missing that. Did you mention that?
I did, yeah, yeah. 317 were in attendance this year.
Okay, good.
Much like compared to other years, Matt, Mr. Phillips.
It's a little lower. We've seen as many as 700-plus people. So, last year was the first year that we, we had it back after the COVID, a couple of years off for COVID.
Yeah.
And so, just getting back on track and getting it back out there to the public, we look forward to an increase in popularity.
I'll follow up too. The comment I got from folks from around the world, and our judges, for instance, who, you know, been to these events year after year after year after year, the, the security was there, it was, it was, you know, it was obvious, but it wasn't over intimidating, you know? They felt at comfort level, and it just felt like, you know, they were in their own backyard. They, they could let down any guard and just enjoy themselves. So, got that from our VIPs over here, as well as band participants and so forth, and you're right, I'm still getting messages and photos and stuff popping up.
Oh, yeah.
You know, folks around the world. So, thanks for what you did.
Yeah, thank you. You displayed a lot of great leadership there.
Thanks, Ambie. So, Matt, has anything changed with the Upshur County schools and officers in school?
As far as the city goes, I have not heard anything additional. Obviously, I believe it was late 2019, the decision was made to close the door on the city officer's presence at the academy school, and I believe at the time it was cited that more attention was needed at the high school to focus on the prevention resource officers at that location. So, that was the reasoning that was given, and of course, COVID was on the tail end of that, so Mark actually stopped being in the academy school a lot sooner, being just simple because school shut down at that point. But moving past that, it was never revisited to re-entertain the city's response to that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be, I'll be brief, but just to want to report to council on a few matters that we've been working on. This is especially true for the members of council around the water board. The coal spill from the United Coal Company facility up at Marter Rowag caused damage to one of our two water pumps at the water treatment plant. We've forwarded a letter to the coal company, basically stating our claim and our expectation that the coal company will take responsibility for the damages to that pump. The, following the spill, the fine coal matter, particulate matter, was taken into our pump number two and caused that pump to fail. Neither, well, the coal company notified neither the city nor the state of West Virginia in sufficient time for us to take that pump offline, which could have remedied, which could have avoided the damage.
Right, because the weather that took place to cause that was, was not felt down here. We did not get that rain, so we were, we, we would have relied on reporting from the company or the state of West Virginia, but that did not happen, so.
That's correct. So, so our, so the city's position, at least as expressed by me, is that the coal company is, is fully responsible for the damage to that pump, and that we will hold them responsible for repair of the damage and ultimately the replacement of that pump. Now, shortly before, and when I say shortly, I mean about 20 minutes before council meeting started tonight, I received an email from attorneys at Steptoe and Johnson, who are representing United Coal Company, initiating discussions about this issue. They'd like to have some engineers from United Coal Com and come down to the water treatment plant, look at the damaged pump, and I'll coordinate that with, with Kelly and with Jerry, but we're going to, I don't want to miss any words here. We're going to hold their feet to the fire. The city is not going to be held to any kind of financial damage as a result of their, their negligence. So that, I expect that that visit will take place early next week.
The sooner the better, right?
Oh, certainly. Well, that's right, that's right. And, you know, getting an email at 6:40 saying, hey, maybe we can come down there tomorrow, I don't know that, you know, that's really workable, but I think maybe Monday is, is more reasonable and.
They really, they really don't have a defense, to tell you the truth.
Well, I, I don't, I certainly can't speak.
Well, but not appropriate defense.
Everyone has a defense, whether it's a good one or.
They were negligent, period.
That's, yeah. The other water board issue that we've been dealing with has to do with private fire hydrants. A letter's been drafted, shared with the water board members regarding the water board's discontinuance of its practice of, of inspecting and flushing private hydrants. Public Service Commission holds the water board responsible for certain obligations to assure that those things work. We can, we can make that assurance by requiring those private hydrant owners to have third-party inspection and certifications of those, so that's, that's ongoing as well. inspections and certifications of those, so that's ongoing as well. With respect to the Westland Property Exchange, we held a meeting here last week, or maybe it was actually a little prior to that, with the college's council. The ball's in the college's court right now. We need a response from them on, there are a couple of properties that are going to be part of the exchange, where if, basically between, anything between the trail and the river itself, we need to hear back from the college on whether they intend to kind of retain those riverbanks or whether they're going to be part of the exchange. And Daven Seaman, who's an attorney in Bridgeport, is representing the college in this matter. We're waiting on a response from them before surveying can begin on that. There's some other issues, actually parts of the rail trail are on other third-party pieces of property as well, which complicates things a little bit, but it's nothing that's particularly insurmountable. There's one private entity that owns a riverbank parcel that the walk trail cuts through, and some of the walk trails are actually on railroad right-of-way property as well. And so we're going to have to navigate that issue. I don't think it's going to hold anything up necessarily, but it, from the surveyor's perspective, it complicates matters, and so we have to deal with that. The other property exchange matter is the Danny Williams property. We have identified by Platte the property we're going to convey. We need Mr. Williams to do likewise, and we'll need him to undertake a survey. But before we do a survey, we need a site visit, a walkthrough to kind of identify the corners of what he is going to convey to the city. I expect that to happen within the next week or so. And finally, opioid litigation update. There was a deadline within the judicial process of August 1st for municipalities to submit their consent documents. Mr. Webb, who is our attorney in this matter, all of his clients have submitted all the required documentation. However, there are a small handful of municipalities around the state that have not submitted. He gave me a number of 10 that they're still, that the court is still waiting on before all of those consents can be given to the special commissioner, which has been appointed to what's called the multi-district panel of federal judges that are overseeing this litigation. Once the special commissioner has all of the materials in his possession, his name is Judge Wilks, he will then, I think he's out of Ohio, if I'm not mistaken, he'll have 15 days in order to make a report to the multi-district panel. And Rusty characterizes this as this will happen in the very near future. I have enough experience with, you know, federal judges to know that what's in the very near future of federal judges is not always the way that we kind of interpret, you know, that language. So, you know, end of the year, maybe, maybe not, you know, you can't rush, you can't rush the men and women in the black robes, unfortunately. But once the, once the multi-district panel signs off, and there's actually been a relative, oh, and there's one other thing, there's the settlement with Kroger, which is part of all of this, has to still be filed with the court. And that is, that's, there's an order that has to be issued that they're waiting on. I don't want to get too far in the weeds on judicial process, but once the multi-district panel gives final approval to the settlement, and you may have heard, there was some news, there was some news in the news within the last week or two, that the United States Supreme Court is getting involved with this and is actually holding up kind of a related settlement that involves the Sackler family. And the name of that company is escaping me at the moment, but it's one of the biggest ones that manufactures OxyContin. They are throwing a little bit of a wrench into that part of the settlement, and this is the United States Supreme Court. So that has the potential of delaying this at all. But once, once this is all done, the money will be released into our attorney's client trust accounts, and then our, some funds will be distributed to the city at that point. I cannot offer the council a firm estimate on when that will happen, unfortunately. That's all I have. On behalf of taking questions.
Any questions for Mr. O'Neal relative to his report?
I guess I have one comment, Tom, when you talked about the transfer property and the walk trails owned by the part of it, the railroad and other private entities. I get a lot of phone calls with people that are really upset about the feral cats on the walk trail. And I think it's something that we must address sometime. I don't, this is not obviously that, but we need to take a serious look at that because, you know, it used to be a great place for birds and squirrels and rabbits and little ducklings and everything, and the cats have just decimated them. That's what I've been told.
That, I mean, that's a really important point, and I think one of the, one of the things that we discussed a moment ago with respect to the college and whether the college wants to keep that riverbank property, once, if the college does not, I think that's probably the way this will go, because that riverbank property really doesn't have much value on its own, that that will be city property and then the city will have kind of standing. I think this arrangement that we have with Mr. Slaughter, you know, would kind of come into play on that.
Well, I'm worried that some people are going to get rid of the cats.
Take matters into their own hands, yeah, that'd be unfortunate.
And they can, you know, they poison them sometimes, or they pick them up and throw them out in the country or in the river. And I love animals, and I just, I love all the animals down here, but the cats should not be there.
No, I do. I have three cats myself, and, you know, I know how you feel.
I got a cat in my neighborhood that's adopted.
Yeah, and they were all three strays, by the way. We're a sucker for stray cats at our house. Anyway. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. All right. Under correspondence and information, we have the Charles W. Gibson Library Directors Report. Hello, Kathy?
Hello.
Thank you for being here. We have the report of the cat and dog activity from the Upshur County Commission for June. We have the, as promised, at the last council meeting, it was directed that the water board would take up either to accept or not the contribution, the $15,000 lease agreement, the payout for that, that's an annual $15,000 for the Sutton Link Optimum Sequel Communications Equipment on the water tower, water tank up on, above the cemetery, North Buchanan Water Tank Hill. That, the water board unanimously approved that, so this is back just for correspondence and information to let the council know that that took place. As Chief Gregory mentioned, Move-In Day is this Saturday at Westland. Mead Street will be down to one way. It will, it will go from College Avenue one way to Camden Avenue. So no traffic will be able to go north. It will only go to the, I guess it would be like northwest to southeast, but from, from College to Camden will be the only direction. So please, if you're in that area, have some patience while we get the kids moved in. We have a, we have a larger freshman class coming in this year than we've had in years past since 2017, which is a good, a good thing. And then also, as we may have mentioned, under the Waste Department report, the Make It Shine Saturdays are September the 9th and September the 23rd. Those will go from 7:30 in the morning till 3:30 in the afternoon at the transfer station. Okay. Under the consent agenda, we have the approval of our minutes from the 7/6 meeting that we needed to catch back and approve. We have the approval of the building and wiring permits. We have the approval of payment bills, and also, we received a letter of resignation from one of our board members of the Stockard Youth and Community Center Board Directors, Melissa Frank, who has served West Virginia Westland College. She is retiring, so we will need to work to, it is, it is part of the board's makeup that we need to have a representation from West Virginia Westland College. So we'll work with college officials to bring a name back to the next council meeting to get to approve as a new board member for the, for the Stockard Youth and Community Center Board. So I would entertain a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So move second.
We have a motion from Mr. Rollins and a second from Mr. Riggar. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Down to strategic issues for discussion or vote, we have taken care of one, four, five, and six. We have two and three remaining. This is relative to the railroad. This is to review and approve to allow the West Virginia Department of Highways, as well as the A&amp;O Railroad that's here in town, to upgrade the surface at the existing railroad crossings. One, that Railroad Avenue, which is West Virginia Split Rail, and then one is just to the upper side of that, on Camden Avenue near the baseball field. So right there together, they would like to, for us to allow them to improve those surfaces, and I would say that that should be an easy, an easy yes to both of those. So I would entertain a motion first for F2, that since they are separate, to allow for the Railroad Avenue Crossing near West Virginia Split Rail to be resurfaced, is there a motion? I heard Mr. Sanders first, Thomas is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries unanimously. F3, again, the same thing, but at the Camden Avenue Crossing near the baseball field, is there a motion?
So move second.
Motion by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Sanders. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Down to council comments and announcements. See, that wasn't too bad, once we got, once we got those, those department reports that were with, it wasn't too bad. Okay. Down to comments and announcements, we begin with Mrs. Buckley.
I just want to thank Rodney and Channel the Brief for showing a lot of the Wamsby stuff continually. I've had a lot of people comment and say, we really appreciate you doing that, and some people, that's the only way they've gotten to see it, so that really did make remarks on that. And also, Matt, when you get done with the speed thing down on East Main Street, that comes down, some people requesting that you put it on Park Street for a while. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. McCall?
13 out of 80 seats sold, that leaves 67 to go. I think Jack's going to buy, what, about 10 or 12 of them? But seriously, 250 bucks to be, you know, memorialized in perpetuity, it's a good, it's a good thing to support the Colonial Theater Project, so consider that. And looking forward to supporters, friends of Stocker coming out at the September 13th meeting to discuss the new building. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Riggar?
I think, just a comment on Wamsby, again, just a tremendous success, and of course, the police presence there, the emergency services, I mean, it was everything that Chief Gregory presented. And congratulations on your Kalia accreditation. We know that that takes a tremendous amount of effort on your part and others, and that's, again, a tremendous accomplishment. And I want to comment on the Wizard of Oz. Anybody that went to the production, that was fantastic. And the creative arts, no, it was in Westland. But, you know, all the people that participated in that, it was just fantastic, so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thomas?
I was going to make a comment about the River Walk today in regard to the cats. I mentioned that to Tom, and it's something we really need to take a serious look at. It's very important. And I also wanted to make a personal announcement. My oldest daughter had a baby boy yesterday. So I now have 10 grandchildren, and six of them are coming to see me next week for my birthday, and they're probably driving us like they did during the Strawberry Festival, but I enjoyed it immensely. And a funny story, I have to tell this story. I'm sitting in my living room talking to all the kids and everything, and they can't conceptualize what it means being blind. They say, look, Gramps, look at this. And I said, guys, guys, I can't see this thing. But a little while later, a cat jumped on my lap, scared the hell out of me, scared my leg. And I said, this is your cat, Gramps? I said, I don't have a cat. So they played with this cat all the time they were there, and the cat has now adopted me, so I've got to figure out what to do. That's it. Thanks to everybody.
You got a cat up there?
It's a sweet cat.
Thanks, David.
Sweet cat.
CJ?
You know, sometimes you get so close to things that they just get normalized. And so after our lunch meeting today, Randy and I were sitting on the bench out in front of the Opera House, and this couple came up and asked if I was the owner of the restaurant, and I said, yeah. I'm thinking to myself, how the hell did she know that? She was staying at Stonewall Jackson, and one of the costumier or someone said they need to come to Bacchanum and look around. And so she grew up in Pittsburgh, so we had a conversation about that, but then they started commenting about Bacchanum and how it looks like and what it feels like to them. And that, so sometimes when you get affirmation, you know, from things going on kind of resets you and say, hey, you know, we're not, we get caught up with all the things we need to do better or what we messed up, but, you know, we're on the right path here, and don't be discouraged about if something goes a little haywire, but we're doing, we're doing good. That's all I have.
Thanks, CJ. Mr. Sanders?
Yes, sir. I will refer to Wamsby once again, and I'll make sure these become a part of a permanent record in a future set of minutes, but we did receive a letter from Robert Eklund, who is the president of the International Association of, or, I'm sorry, the World Association of Marching Showmen. So, and it reads, Dear Randy, on behalf of the World Association of Marching Showmen Board of Directors and the volunteers, we would like to thank you, Randy. Please pass along our thanks to Lee Winter and the hundreds of city employees, first responders, and the allies who collaborated, took diligent efforts to make the 2023 Wamsby World Championship so successful. The support that was evident from the mayor, city council, and citizens made a tremendous impact to the participating groups. The offices received many positive comments of the events that were organized. When our organization's first conceived, it was designed with two major goals. One, a quality competition with a jury of experts with no biased preferences to form and style. Their evaluation of each performance is based on the quality of the ensemble. Two, through the language of music to build an understanding of people around the world. We believe these goals were extraordinarily accomplished by your event. Also, my personal feeling is that it was a perfect example of the old adage, when the going gets tough, the tough kid going. Outstanding work. Congratulations, Robert Eklund, president and CEO of Wamsby International. So we'll just kind of wrap it up with that. Again, I echo what Chief said, the employees stepped up, everybody that contributed to the event stepped up, and I could not have been more proud of our city and our area here. They just really opened their arms up to every one of our visitors from around the world. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, I think we all continue to receive positive feedback from, from the events that we've had this year. And it was also, so a couple of weeks ago, I had got, I was asked to greet the Class of 77, BUHS Class of 77 at Jobon Partridge Festival Fridays, and I thought that I would just be talking to them back at the tent, but Jeff Godwin had other plans and wanted me to go up on stage and talk to the park through the microphone system, including them. So I figured out a couple of things I could say, and when I asked if everybody had enjoyed all of the events that we had offered this year, starting with Strawberry Festival, then going into the Barbecue Bash, then going into our Fourth of July Celebration, and then to Wamsby, it was a resounding cheer. Everybody in this community has really enjoyed the events that we have, that we have offered. It takes significant investment from financial resources as well as time and planning, and I think that we have proven time and time again that we, we know how to, we know how to, we know how to put on a really nice event. We know how to throw a good party for the folks that live here and for the folks that come to, to visit here. You know, over the past couple of weeks, I've seen, I think, two or three, maybe four or five different lists, the eight best, the seven best, the 10 best, the 12 best. Every time that there is a list of the best communities in West Virginia, we are on it. We never miss. We are on every single list. And they point to the fact that this community is always looking to improve, to advance, to offer something new. to offer something new, and we have, but we also retain that sense of culture and who we are, even when we're advancing and trying something new. So this is, this is certainly a unique place. We know that. Every time we leave Buchanan and go somewhere and someone says, "Where are you from?", they say, "Well, Buchanan," everybody's face lights up, and Tammy and I will get that. We're going to the Business Summit again this year with the West Virginia Chamber of Commerce, and when someone sees that Buchanan on, on, on the name tag, they light up because that they know what a, what a great town that we have here and how fortunate we are to live here. And I agree with Councilman Rylands. We, we, we know we have issues to work on. We, we, we know that things are, you know, we, we have a serious issue with our, with our school system. We have a serious issue trying to protect our hospital. We, there are things that keep us up at night, but we have a lot of positive momentum. And as we talked about at our annual meeting yesterday morning with the Development Authority, this is a strong community, and the challenges we face, we will get through them and we will always emerge stronger. It is what we do. So thank you to everybody. Thank you to my colleagues on council for all of your work. Thank you, Ambie, and Chief, and Tom, and Jody, and Jerry, and Catherine, and Tammy, for, Katie, for the folks here in the room and beyond who, who work hard every day for us, from, from, from putting together reports that let us know that we can afford what we want to do, to throwing events, to housing the guests, to protecting us, to keeping us legally sound, to telling our story, to inviting people to come to our community, to enriching the educational aspect. We have, we have people here that are working on all those fronts, and thank you also to Rodney for helping tell our story here to the citizens. So with that, thank you to the citizens. Thank you to everybody who contributes out there. I hope everybody has a great weekend. I'll entertain a motion in the future. All right.